We'd like to welcome everybody to County Council. I mean, yeah, all of you, appreciate you. This is a, we'll go ahead and start by the opening of Councilmember Catherine Buse, please.
Sure. Um, I came upon this quote the other day when I was reading something and I thought it was really good. Oh, let me turn on my mic. Thought it was really good and it says, "We cannot be mere consumers of good governance. We must be participants. We must be co-creators." And I think that goes for us here on this council and our, and as we come up on the primary election season, that's how everyone can participate in, um, in our system of government. And with that, I'd like to lead us as well in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if you notice, there was just a slight, slight change in the agenda, so we will have the amended agenda. I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we approved the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, how about the, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from February 13th.
I'll move approval of those minutes.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded that we approve the minutes of February 13th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, let's go ahead and report of the county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one, uh, one round of appointments this evening. I was gonna say one appointment, but it's three people who are Career Service Council. Uh, as the council will remember, we made some changes to how we handle our personnel operations here in the county. And one of the requirements that came along with that was that we create what's called a Career Service Council. And just wanna thank our HR Director, Amy, for helping to find some experts in our community who could serve on this council. And she was able to find three individuals who have some expertise, not just in human resources, but in government-related human resources. And that was kind of a tough task for her, but I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about each of the people that we were able to track down. The first one is Ambry Darley, and she is currently the Director of Human Resources for Logan City. She was raised here in the valley, earned a bachelor's and master's in business and has been working for Logan City for more than a dozen years and the last several years in human resources there as their director. The next person that I'd like to appoint to the Career Service Council is Doug Bullock. He's the Associate Vice President of Human Resources at Utah State University. He has more than 20 years in HR management and generalist roles. Uh, he's certified senior professional in human resources, a senior certified professional, certified compensation professional, certified change manager, just about all the certifications you could get in human resources, in addition to his bachelor's and master's in business. And, uh, as I said, again, experienced public sector HR. And then the third person is Jake Gordon, and he happens to be an attorney. He used to work for us, actually, in, in our attorney's office and is in private sector now. Uh, 14-plus years of experience with broad background in litigation, including employment law, compliance, policy generation, also has a bachelor's and master's law degree and, um, worked in our attorney's office from 2009 to 2022. So I'm really pleased with these three individuals that have been willing to or are willing to serve on our Career Service Council. And I would submit their three names to the County Council now for your advice and consent.
Can you explain a little more about what they actually will contribute to the HR department? Like, what, what is their role and what kind of authority do they? I know it's advisory.
Yeah, it's, it's basically an appeals board. So if there are HR actions that are appealable, um, those will go to this Career Service Council. And, um, other than that, they're, they're not necessarily going to advise our office or anything like that. So they're an appeal, an appeal work.
Thank you.
What was the duration of their appointment?
Uh, it's a one-year term.
Golden Star for Wellsville tonight, so two people from Wellsville, so.
I would move that we accept the names that have been presented for the Career Service Council.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, we accept, third now, accept, uh, is it Amber Darley?
Ambry.
Ambry Darley, Doug Bullock, and Jake Gordon for the Career Service Council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Special interests, Better Over Health Department, or Mental Health Departments.
I think you all got an electronic copy of the audit. Would any of you like a hard copy?
I would. I would, actually.
You got them, I'll take one.
Appreciate that very much.
Yeah, can you hand one to me as well?
To sign up for hearing. I wanted one too. Carl would like one too, if we could. Sorry to make you dance.
State code says that, uh, an executive from the Mental Health Department is supposed to come and present the audit to the, uh, to the local mental health authority, and that's what I'm here to do today. And then I have something that, uh, a certification that says you've had it presented to you and been able to ask any questions, so we'll go to page five. It's not actually, there's actually not a number on there, but it's the first page in the financial section there. This is the independent auditor's report. And in the second paragraph down there, the auditor state that, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Bearham Mental Health Services, Inc., as of June 30th, 2023 and '22. And the changes in net assets and cash, its cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So it was a clean audit this year. Then if I can get you to turn to the last two pages in the audit, this is, uh, the auditor's report on internal control over financial stuff. And in the last paragraph there, towards the bottom, it says, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." And then on the last page, in the second, last paragraph, the last sentence, "The results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." And I'll go through a few highlights of the actual numbers, and then if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. So on page eight is the statement of financial position or our balance sheet. And you can see that our, uh, total net assets went from $14 million 3 to $16 million 4. One other line I'd like to, about in the middle of the page, there's, uh, a line there that's unexpanded county funds. So the county's year and our year are different. We're on the state fiscal year, so we end, uh, June 30th. You guys are on the calendar year. So we come and ask for a budget request from you, um, when you're doing it for the, for the calendar year. And if those ever don't match up what you need to match the state, you could be over or short. And if you ever have more money in the budget than we need to do the 20% match on the county, we keep it on our balance sheet for years when you might be short. So that unexpanded county funds is between the three, um, counties, Cash Rich and Box Elder. If we flip over to the next page, page nine, this is our statement of activities or our, you bet.
I looked at this, I thought, uh, that's quite a, an impressive current ratio you have.
Yeah. It is.
That's, that's a lot of cash that, and cash equivalents, so I don't imagine it's just cash, but.
And most of it's in the PTIF, the Public Treasurers Investment Fund, and so we do meet the Money Management Act.
Okay.
On page nine, our statement of activities or our income statement, you can see that our, um, revenue was down just slightly over the previous year and our expenditures up about a little over a million dollars. So we, our increase in net access was the $2,090. And one thing I'd like to point out here, I do it every year, if you look at the third line down up there under governmental support, is the county funds from the three counties, the $503,000. That matches those state funds, the 20% match. Then we take those state and county funds and match Medicaid, um, match Medicaid with those and bring down those federal dollars. And so that, our budget's really built on what the counties put in. We take that $500,000 and we bring down $18 million and, uh, provide services in the three-county area. On page 10 is the statement of functional expense, so that's just those expenditures broken out. You can see that our, uh, you'd think from a service organization, our biggest, uh, expanse is our personnel. You can also see that our management in general's right around 10%. With that, I'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Well, that got reverent.
No, I have, I have a question, and it has to do with the receiving center and the funds that are coming from the state for the receiving center.
Uh-huh.
And you guys have committed funds. Where, does that fit anywhere into all this? Have you received any of those state funds yet or?
We have not received any even yet, and we didn't have any in fiscal year 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
Looks like a well-run.
Yeah. No other comments? Go ahead, Carl. No color? Okay.
I'll just add, uh, Rob does a fantastic job managing the finances there, so, um, this audit is just evidence of that, and I appreciate his hard work and dedication to making sure that the people of our county who are in need of their services have the resources there available. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
And here's the form with the signatures.
Everyone get to sign that? Okay.
Stay and be enlightened.
I guess we're now to the update on the status of the remaining ARPA.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you for letting me come back again. Um, I told you last time, I hoped that I wouldn't be losing sleep, and I did a little bit this morning. But, you know, in the last couple of weeks, I've been working with, um, some of the department heads, specifically Public Works, and, uh, I'm feeling really pretty good about this. But I wanted to, to give you an update. Um, I, I put a hand out there with your, um, on your desk. Um, I'm just gonna go through and highlight some of these things. Um, I report quarterly, and so the last record, report, um, we reported, uh, that we had already spent not quite $13 million, and that includes the $10,000, or $10 million for the standard allowance. You asked me if I would, uh, look or talk to the, um, the department heads and those responsible for the different, uh, projects, and I've been doing that, um, before it was quarterly, and now I'm doing it monthly or even more often, um, just so we kind of stay on top of this and make sure that everything gets obligated in a, in a timely manner. But you asked me if some of the projects were gonna be underspent, and some of the ones that I identified there are highlighted kind of in the middle of the page. The big ones, um, I talked with IT, Bart in IT, and, uh, there's a project that he was awarded for $15,000, and that's not gonna happen. Another one in, in finance, workstation for remote and hybrid work for $21,000, that's not going to happen. And so, um, if you add all those, it's just a little over $37,000 that I've identified so far. Um, if you take that and then the buffer amount, um, that you set aside for the $435,000, just a little over $435,000, if you add those two together, you have not quite $473,000. Um, that needs to be awarded into projects. On the 5th of February, I sent you a lot of materials, um, shared a spreadsheet with you, um, and one of the materials that I sent was some possible potential, um, projects that could be identified in the, in the county. And, um, and since then, I've gotten a few more. Um, one that I missed, the Senior Center, and, and just because I'm mentioning them doesn't mean that they will act, actually qualify, but I just wanted to mention them so that it's just kind of there. Uh, the Senior Center has had some work, they were awarded some money, they have some leftover money, um, and they were wondering if they could use it for a project. One of the ones that in previous years, um, that was considered was refinishing the floor in the event center that was used as a vaccination center. Um, that one wasn't awarded. That amount, uh, I put $22,000, but it would probably be more than that. Um, and there's a few other ideas. Some of the things that I've been, like I mentioned, I was talking to the Public Works, um, and he's got a lot of projects. He was awarded $6.5 million for culverts. Um, and he's got probably anywhere between, um, eight to a dozen or more projects that, if you look at them, and, um, they could add up to about $15 million. And so I think, and plus, there's some other things, the flooding, um, one of the final rules is called the interim final rule. They had a final, they had an interim rule, a final rule, now we have another interim final rule, uh, from the US Treasury. And one of the things that they said could be covered is flooding, and so there's also that. So there is quite a few things that we can get obligated. On the timeline for doing these, um, just wanna highlight a few things. Development Services was awarded $5.5 million. They've got that work out for bid, and that's gonna come in, um, mid-March. Um, if you look at some of the Public Works, um, projects, um, a lot of them are going on right now, and they could put those out for bid in May and June, um, and July. And so as far as awarding the, or obligating these, um, I don't think we're gonna have a problem. It's just gonna be a matter of, I'm gonna kind of stay on that, talking with the, the department heads, I've asked to be invited to the next department head meeting, and, and we'll kind of talk about some of these things. But I, I'm making a suggestion, um, and I'll do whatever you suggest, but my suggestion is take that buffer, um, the $435,000 plus kind of some of the ones that are underspent, about $37,000 leaves you with about $473,000. What process would you like to see, or how would you like to allocate, or where would you like to see that money go? I think we need to start discussing that process so we can get it in projects, so they could either get spent by the end of this year. And again, on the bottom of that page, um, any unspent money by December 31st, 2024 has to be either spent or obligated in a contract. So do you have any questions on the materials that I've sent you in the past, things that I've said today, or what, what would you like to do so that we could get this money in projects?
One thought that comes to mind for me, and of course, they have to qualify for it, but in our budget this, for 2024, in trying to pare things back, we reduced quite substantially any capital costs, any capital expenditures.
Okay.
And I think that, uh, it might be good to look at these, to see if any of these qualify in, in some of our needed capital, uh, projects that we have or, or needs that we have.
Okay.
I have a question, Alma.
Mm-hmm.
You know, some of these that were awarded are underspent. Obviously, they didn't need to spend as much as they were awarded, so.
Right.
Say we obligate money by December of this year, but at, at the end of 2026, or say it's 2025, and those contracts came in and they, they were underspent then, can we re-award money or that was not, that was obligated already? Or like, do we just lose that money? How does that process work?
It's, yeah, it has to be obligated by the end of this year, and if it's not obligated and it comes underspent, as far as I understand, it would be lost. So hopefully, they'll over-obligate maybe. Um, especially, I mean, we have Public Works, I attended their meeting just yesterday and, and, you know, if you have $15 million, certainly if they can all over-obligate a little bit in some of them, um, hopefully we can come in pretty close there. Any other questions?
Comments, questions?
Well, I just, you know, the, before we had, you know, nonprofits, we had a lot of different things. I think this should go to county departments, that they should be the ones who apply for this in this round. I don't know what anyone else feels, but that's my opinion, that it should go to county projects.
It's my feeling as well.
I agree.
I think meeting with the department heads like you suggested is a great start.
Okay. And I've got a lot of, a list of them. Should we open up another application process, or how would you like to?
I think we need to come down based on needs. I mean, for those of us who sat in the Public Works yesterday, road and everything, there's a huge possibility there. I think there's been talk about some other places like the Senior Center or some of those others, but, um, my feeling is, is I'd like this money to go to something that we're, as a county, gonna have to spend in the future anyhow.
It has some long, it has some longevity.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I would say we shouldn't use it for operating type.
I don't think you can.
I agree.
Yeah, you really can't.
Yeah, you can't. Okay, that's good.
So you'll reach out to them, have them put together so that we, they can be ranked or our, you know, the process that we had before, I thought worked out really good with what you had presented.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could do that again. We could, um, I'll reach out to them in that department head meeting and let them know we're gonna open another round of applications and.
Probably sooner rather than later.
Okay, send it to us tomorrow and we'll do that.
Sure.
Alma, thanks for all of this. That's a great job.
Very well done. We appreciate the detail.
Thank you.
It's not an easy process.
No, it's not.
It's not. We'll get there. I really, I really think that we will.
You're good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, I guess on the recorder's office, the ARPA funds.
If you want me to talk about that again, the recorder's here.
Oh, there you are. Did you want to share anything about that, or do you want?
We, we, we visited, and, uh, let me just tell you kind of what's going on. So with the previous, um, recorder, um, the council awarded two projects, one for $100,000 and one for $98,300. These, both of the projects were to scan records, um, which are the indexes in the plat maps. When they sent off, the, the current recorder sent off the materials to have them, well, they went through the process, they got some bids, and the two companies that were identified was US Imaging and CoFile. And when they sent all the materials to these two companies, um, CoFile approached Tenille and said, "Hey, you've spent, you've sent," um, I think it was 37, 39, 39 additional plats, um, that wasn't in the original bid. And so she talked with them and, and they talked about, uh, an additional $4,000 to do those, rather than having them sent back, they had them already. Um, right now, her one, um, account for the project is left with about $14,000. She was wondering, because both the projects are doing basically the same thing, was wondering if it was possible to move the money from one project, $4,000 approximately, to the other one to pay for the, the additional plat maps that were, um, that were, um, done. And then with the $10,000 that would be left in the one project, uh, she would look for some additional work that could be done there, um, and have them done, have them do that for the $10,000. So I guess what she's asking is, can the $4,000 be moved from one project to another with your approval? Would that be all right?
Sounds like a reasonable thing.
So the plats are already there, they're on site?
They're on site.
Yeah.
And so she said it would either have to come out of her budget or out of the ARPA funds, because the one budget, she's already spent all the money, and she would have to move it from the, one of the ARPA projects to the other one.
I see no.
I don't see a problem.
I don't see any problem doing this, but would it have to go through budget opening for us to transfer that?
Um, I don't think so.
She just said she would just need my approval to do it before the fund was moved.
Because it's ARPA funds, I guess.
ARPA funds and it's.
And it's within the same, it's within the same realm of, uh, what was.
Yeah, I think it's also, both the projects are in the same account. I don't think there would need to be a.
Well, then I think we could probably even go ahead and we could vote on that right now if you'd like. We'll just go ahead and do a vote here.
Okay.
Or want to, does anyone want to come up with a motion first?
I'd move that we authorize the, the transfer of the $4,000 to cover the, the alternate project and.
About the $10,000?
Second.
And the use of the $10,000 for?
Do we need to?
The $10,000 is still in a project, and Tenille said she would just look for some additional materials that she could, uh, have. Otherwise, it would be underspent. So I don't think you need to do anything with that. She'll just continue to, she'll look for something to spend that on.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving seconded that, uh, we give permission for the $4,000 to be used and then the continuance and usage of the final $10,000.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Uh, let's go on with, uh, Dr. Esplin. Reassignment of RAPS funds there? Reassignment of some RAPS funds.
Yes, sir. So, uh, thanks for having me tonight. Uh, just a couple brief items, both of them pertaining to, uh, prior RAPS funding. In 2021, the fairgrounds was awarded, um, the total project cost was, uh, $77,880. We received $38,940 for ventilation upgrade in the indoor arena, installing fans or something of that nature. Um, at that, at the time I submitted the RAPS project, I thought I had a good idea. Turns out that it really didn't, wasn't feasible to do that. I've since been looking at many other projects to try and to, uh, come up with a solution to the, uh, ventilation problem in there. Recently met with an engineer, um, I'm gonna, we're gonna hire their firm to look at that. What I'm asking for is to move those funds forward. That should have been spent by the end of '23, technically, um, based on 21 RAPS funding, so I'm requesting another couple years to spend that money. Uh, the other item would be a 2023 RAPS project, which was installing, uh, concrete in the live, uh, on the floors in the livestock barns. I have some extra money from that project due to, you know, being the timing and be able to work during the winter when the contractor was slower. Um, part of, this is kind of along the same, it is for the same project, but wasn't specifically included in, in my RAPS request, and that would be to buy approximately $25,000 in GO panels for our county fair. Um, as we continue to grow, uh, we're gonna need those, I mean, we need them already. We currently get panels from, uh, Box Elder County, and this, I think will solve, I'm being told this will solve that, uh, problem. So those are my two requests, move the 2021, or extend the 2021, uh, RAPS project for. RAPS project for another couple of years, and then allow me to use the leftover funds from this 2023 project to buy these panels. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, it sounds like a reasonable request again to me.
Entertained a motion.
I'll move that we reassign the RAPS funds as presented by Bart and we approve that.
Second.
Move and second that we reassign the RAPS funds, the 2021, 2023 adjustments that he has explained. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart.
It'll be done by tomorrow. Good for you.
Close.
Thanks, Bart.
Thank you.
Board of Equalization. Diane.
Because that, we can do this in two minutes or ten minutes, it's your choice. But what you have before you tonight are twenty-nine exemptions. All of them have received the exemption in previous years, so no new ones. Eleven of them are charitable, four educational, and fourteen are religious.
Well, I read through all of them, and I don't see any reason not to exclude them from exemption.
Do we need to go into the Board of Equalization first?
We do, sorry.
I move that we go into Board of Equalization.
Second.
Move and second, we go into the Board of Equalization. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of these applications for exemption for the year, what, 2024?
Second.
Move and second that we approve all these exemptions that are religious, education, charitable organizations that was presented to us. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good work, Diana.
It just, Diana, any estimate at all for the amount of property tax that is being exempted? Add these all together?
I don't have that off the top of my head. If you're terribly interested, I could attempt that. The problem is, is that on many of them that have had exemptions since, say, before Tamra's time, they are not even assessed. So in other words, I'd have to ask the assessor's office to volunteer staff time to try to come up with that. So you give me the go-ahead and we'll do it.
I think we're okay.
Or leave it as a curiosity? Have you come in with an estimate?
Curiosity, I, I know.
It's a very interesting question.
When I sat on the Logan City Council, there are so many tax-exempt entities within Logan City that makes a huge impact on having the revenue they need because we got
Because.
Half of the, literally half of the land in Logan City is tax-exempt, so.
Yeah, and it's interesting because it's, Kathleen always used the, we all get on a bus and go to Wendover analogy, and then a few people just jump off and stay there. And when the ticket comes due at the end, there's fewer people to pay that. That's analogous to that tax burden shift, when people don't have to pay their taxes. Of course, we have to follow statute on these. And I did look into the low income. We have four of those. I'll be bringing them to you on the twelfth. They all have either IRS-exempt status themselves, or they've partnered with an exempt organization like Neighborhood Nonprofit on the Spring Hollow. Two of those. But now those are huge. When they jump off, you know, the hospitals jump off, that's, that's huge amounts of money, millions of dollars. So, but you've all signed up for those exciting hearings, so we'll be doing those. Look forward to spending time with you there.
It is hard to put value, though, to all the, you know, the, the impact that they're even, that they're having on the community as a whole, all of these. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty dramatic, as far as just influencing the community for good.
Yeah, well, if we look and see how many of them do have value, and if maybe there's a few left, because I can do some database searches on that, maybe I can get Brett to.
Yeah.
Throw me a couple hours.
We appreciate that. I should do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go to nine A. At that point, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to set that public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, for ordinance twenty-two-four zero-three. An ordinance to vacate the county road right-of-way located south of Millville City along five hundred east, south of thirty-eight hundred south, and north of forty-two hundred south, including the right-of ways between the Blacksmith Fork River and six hundred east.
I'll second it.
Move and seconded that we set that public hearing as stated with ordinance twenty-two-four oh-three on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion passes. That was. Initial proposals, resolution twenty-two-four oh-three, amending the personnel policy and procedure manual. Dr. Adams.
As Amy's walking up, I, I just wanted to correct. I said one year on that term earlier. It's one year for the alternates, but the primary, primary members of that career service commissioner actually serve in three-year terms. So just wanted to correct.
Those three, all primary?
Yes.
Makes more sense than trying to change it.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, turn it over to you. Let us have it.
Let you have it? Okay. This is pretty easy, actually. So you'll remember recently, there was a code that was passed that said any type of extra pay that was given to employees needed to have policy with that. We have come across that there is not a policy for on-call time. And so this is the policy that will, we're putting before you for you to approve, to be able to work through how we're, we're doing that on-call time. Would you like me to read it, or have you had a chance to review it, and would you ask questions? What, how would you like me to proceed?
I know it has gone through ordinance and policy.
It has, yes.
Review committee, and if any of them would like to speak up on that, share any enlightening things, or anyone?
I have a question. This, this just puts into policy what we've already been doing. This doesn't, this doesn't cause something new to go into effect. It's what's already been doing.
Correct, yes. And I believe last council meeting, the, in the budget amendment, the amount of on-call pay was discussed. So this is maybe a little bit backward, but, you know, the process of how we have to go through the O and P meeting and finally make it to council is a little bit.
We adjusted those amounts in the budget, too, to reflect that, I remember.
I don't have any questions.
Nope, I don't either.
Thank you.
That's like a Sunday School two-minute talk for her.
Oh, right. They just all want to go home. Short agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty, oh, that we just suspend the rules.
Yep.
And approve resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-three, a resolution amending the personnel policy and procedure manual to establish a policy for on-call time in the county.
I'll second.
Move and seconded that we suspend the rules and approve resolution twenty-two-four oh-three as stated. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, if you look on the back, any more, I know there's been some discussion about UAC Building Conference, and anyone else wanting to add to that? Go. It was suggested that maybe once in your four-year term, that you could probably go down to that, but.
I did last year.
Yeah, I think a lot of us were there last year.
Okay, well, if you are, please reach out to Micah, so we can get that arranged, if you're wanting to go to that. Any additions or deletions to the management conference?
Yes, I want to go to that. I plan on going to that. Have you already got hotel rooms, Micah? There, I know they're available.
I will book those this week.
I saw the registration.
What day is that? Isn't that weird? Isn't it like a Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday, or.
Tuesday to. So just Tuesday and Wednesday?
No, Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, we probably need night, the Monday night, too?
It starts fairly early that next morning, I believe, so.
The Monday night?
Or just get up early.
Really early.
Yeah, that one in St. George, yeah, you need to act a day early.
And I, let me see, I think there's a board of directors meeting.
Where's our hotel there?
I don't know, but I think you have that one, but.
Okay, everyone. Any other? Got Sandy added?
I'm checking into it, so I'll see.
Okay, let Micah know then, knowing if things changed there.
Are you still a question mark? Are you going?
Uh, it's still a question mark. There's a lot that happens between now and then.
Depends on the rains, right?
Yeah. It's a bad time of the year to have any conference, to be honest with you. Okay, all the other items, how about C and D have been provided for, well, let's see. I didn't see that in our thing, any of the recategorization reports? They were not part of it?
I, I have those. I don't think I put them in your packets.
I didn't.
Okay, could you email those for us to look at?
Yeah, I apologize.
And under twelve E, let's go ahead and share any kind of updates. Micah, do you have anything that's, I mean, it's kind of the hands-in-the-air thing this week?
Kind of is.
Done all we could, almost.
Let me pull up, let me put my screen up here.
It has been a ride, I will say that.
Yeah, it's scary for Dan Johnson.
I know, scary.
Very.
I heard he was doing better.
Sat by him there Saturday, he was, he had a night.
I, I heard an update this morning. They said that he just was a little, like, his eyes got a little blurry and he was a little confused. They took him to the hospital. By the time Carol got there, he was doing almost completely better, and they were going to let him out today. It wasn't as serious as, as what he's had in the past.
That's good.
That's what I heard this morning, so I don't know about still.
Go ahead, Micah.
Yeah, so a couple of the bills that are still kind of pending these last few days of the session, this is HB two-seventy. This is the bill, we talked about this a couple of council meetings ago, multi-county appraisal trust fund modifications. Originally, the bill instituted an increase, an increase in, a mandatory increase in property taxes statewide. They then amended that out, and then the Senate and House failed to come to an agreement about the substitute. So then yesterday, this bill had quite a ride yesterday. They met in conference committee and put that property tax increase back into the bill. It then passed both the House and the Senate, but then twenty minutes later, the House took a motion to reconsider, and that passed. So it's now back on the House third reading calendar. And so I, I don't, the, the current version still has that mandatory increase in property taxes statewide. The reason for that is that it implements a statewide, let me just read the, the highlighted provisions. Increases the tax rate of the multi-county assessing and collecting fee. Then addresses, sorry, requires each county to adopt a statewide property tax system, and then exempts certain counties from their requirement to adopt the statewide property tax system. I'm not sure what those requirements are. Our treasurer, Craig McAllister, is a little bit more familiar with the details, if you'd be willing to ask. But the status of this bill, I'd say, is pretty unknown. I know that UAC is, is in support of it, but there are.
The ones who are going to take it over, right?
Yeah, yeah. And there, but there are mixed feelings here at the county. The other bill, I know some of you were, were concerned with. This is the big one. One of the big ones that is still left, the Utah Fair Park Area Investment and Restoration District. This bill had a very significant amendment this morning. The second substitute was introduced and it passed. Second substitute removed all, all changes to the transient room tax. So originally, this bill raised the, authorized a, a investment and restoration district in the Fair Park, part of Salt Lake City, that would implement a one and a half percent increase statewide in the transient room tax, and then allow, potentially allow some counties some flexibility in how they used that one and a half percent increase in the TRT. In this amendment, that was completely removed. So this has no effect on transient room tax. It's now funding the baseball stadium through existing sales tax within that district and an increase on, on rental car taxes, one and a half percent. So it really doesn't affect counties directly in the way that it did before. For better or for worse, so.
It will affect us because the amount of sales tax they take from that Fair Park District to fund the stadium is going to have to come from the rest of our sales tax.
That's right. It would be an indirect, it, yeah. It, this will be a significant drag on the state budget, essentially, because that's really a change from a, a revenue and taxation bill to an appropriations bill. That's really primarily what happened with the bill this morning, so.
Did it go through the committee at four o'clock?
So the, the committee, because it hadn't been read for the first time in this, in the Senate, rules prevented the committee from taking any official action. So they just heard it. They just talked about it in the committee today, but they could not take any action. I'm certain that they're going to be meeting again. I was, I was hoping I'd be doing this while they were on the floor, and I could just, I could just broadcast it and cut out the middleman, but they haven't, they haven't met, started meeting yet. That's at six o'clock. I'm sure they'll read it for the first time tonight, and.
What inspired him about eliminating the TRT thing? That's amazing. Because that was, that was, they were adamant. I mean, that was, they were so adamant. Oh, yeah, that's. I won't tell you, I won't tell you how we were told, but, yeah.
No, to the worst.
Wow. Yeah.
Those are the two, I think, really significant bills that.
Do we have an amount of what that would be?
Eight hundred and fifty million.
Yeah, they need about eight hundred and fifty million dollars. I don't know how much that Fair Park District generates in sales tax revenue.
They got it broke down like so much per year as they progress, again, until they get contract and how much they're gonna.
So it'll be owned by the state?
Yeah, so the, the land where it's being built is already owned by the state. The stadium will be owned by the state. That's always been the case.
Not only that.
The, the team will rent it from the state, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. And so, yeah, the, the intent has always been to kind of maintain state control and not be, not be subsidizing anything. Now, I think you're playing a little fast and loose with what constitutes a subsidy, but I think there are more types of subsidies than just handing over lots of cash. But the, the intent has been for the state to own the stadium. Yeah, you guys have any? I, I think there's been a few other bills that you guys have been concerned with that are still active. But these are really the only ones, I think, that still have a, realistically, I think, will pass.
Any wins?
Moral victories. I guess that was a short conversation. If you believe in moral victories, then yes, there have been.
It's, it's a constant battle every year.
Yes, it is. Micah, we appreciate all you've done.
Thank you, Micah.
Yeah, awesome.
Keep us abreast of everything that's going. That's been, it's been quite a, quite a session. Okay, council member reports. Mark, let's start down there, unless you want to start down here, whatever.
I can start, no problem.
Okay.
Nothing to report. I wonder.
I don't think I have either. I'm looking at that clock thinking, holy cow, we gotta be early, so.
Catch the green candy basketball.
I don't have anything either.
I don't. I've been to so many meetings, I don't even remember.
Yeah, I know, that's what I.
There's a lot going on with the homeless council. There's a change in the RFG, which is Request for Federal Grants. Things that used to go through the state, now the homeless council will have a little more control over it. There's still not a lot of money, but, excuse me. So that's probably the biggest thing, I mean.
Nothing for me either.
Okay, I don't have anything either. I think it's been, we've had a real busy past couple of months with so many other things and appreciate everyone's input and participation and, uh, man, this is good. But it hasn't, it hasn't broke the record yet, though, so.
Do you have a short one?
Yeah, uh, other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.